Here.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Klaffenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tam Deidre Tuha Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
And Councilmember Bowie is absent.
Thank you. May I ask Assistant City Manager Maria Stipe to lead us in the invocation, followed by Councilmember Klaffenstein to lead the pledge?
Yes, if everybody could please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith.
Dear gracious Lord, we ask that you be with us tonight as we seek to embrace the needs of our community. We also humbly ask that you guide us to answer those needs so that we may achieve the very best outcomes for the citizens of Garden Grove. Amen.
In this place you hold your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, thank you. And at this time, I'd like to hand it over to Chair Bridgum to open up the Housing Authority.
We'll open the Housing Authority for, can we call roll, please?
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Klaffenstein.
Here.
Commissioner Deidre Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner Tan Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Here.
Vice Chair Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Chair Bridgum.
Here.
And Commissioner Beckles and Commissioner Bowie are absent tonight.
This thing's gonna work. There we go. Okay, move to oral communications. I do have a card. Bernadette, and forgive me, I believe it's Martinez. Yes, sorry.
Hello, my name is Bernadette Martinez. I was here the last meeting, and your prayer is awesome, by the way. I loved your prayer. So the Housing Authority on the agenda, I'm a recipient of rapid rehousing. My landlord has continued to abuse me, harass me, towed two of my vehicles. Police, law enforcement refuses to do a harassment report. I've had three organizations, Pathways of Hope, Mercy House, and Interval House. I was stabbed on May 27th in Garden Grove. I told my landlord, you know, take it easy on me, continued to text me 1:00 AM, 2:00 AM. The whole neighborhood has double parked cars. And I was right there, and he sent an email confirming that he was responsible for both toes. He took my garage away. And I called law enforcement to debate. They said it's a civil thing. No, it's criminal because my belongings are in there, and he won't let me get them. Well, he will, but I have to get like nervous, and because I do suffer from bipolar one and borderline personality disorder. And somehow, there needs to be some sort of revision on civil and criminal with landlord abuse. I was told to do the legal aid to get assistance. Well, legal aid had me, I have the picture, on hold for two hours, two hours. And I told them if it's just legal information, I go to school for my associates in legal studies. And in fact, today, I start business law. But with all this stress, it's just very difficult with my landlord. This is clocked at an hour and 50 minutes with the, sorry, forgive me, one of the organizations that provide legal assistance for Orange County, Communities for Legal Assistance. So it's just very difficult to deal with, and I wish there was something that could be like a program or a contact person for like extreme abuse. Because I am trying to do my best because I was so appreciative of rapid rehousing as far as community involvement and trying to give back and help the really just unquestionable acts that I get involved with. Because for some reason, my landlord just, he won't let up at all. I know I have the picture. But instead, oh, here it is. So I do support J-10 for Congress. I volunteer for phone banking. I do my part, I really do, because I'm taking great advantage of the opportunity that was awarded to me for rapid rehousing. I was homeless for seven years. And it's difficult. And then taking both my cars, like, come on. You know, and I put him on notice. The second day I moved in, his wife came up. So there could be a contact person, if somebody could reach out for extreme abuse. I'm trying really hard to stay focused and not have to be checked in the hospital. But, and I have two kids that were abducted last year. And he's aware of all these hardships, yet he still wants to give me three-day payer quits. Rapid rehousing, Pathways of Hope pays my rent, in full. Why would you give me eight of them and not file unlawful detainer? That is threatening. That's harassment. Eight of them on my door. So I don't want to take more time, but I really appreciate this opportunity. I really hope there's something somebody can do, because I really have exhausted all efforts. And thank you so much, very much. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another card. Mr. Brian Malley?
Good evening. Hey, on the Housing Authority, I've looked at the summaries, the monthly summaries over the last year, and I realized that out of more than 12 months, there's only been two quality assurance from, so I'm just saying, maybe it's something with COVID, but you know, when they look at the government program, the guidelines say that these QC are supposed to be ongoing throughout the year. But the last two was only done this last month, September, out of hundreds. And the other thing that just strikes me odd is the failure rate on the yearly annual inspections. If you were in baseball, it's like 40-something percent, you know, it'd be a great hitting average. But my question was, I see that they show re-inspections, but on the summary page, can we put some metrics in there? Like, you know, how many had to be re-inspected twice, or which was a 24-hour emergency fixture, which was a 30-day? I'd just like to see some more granularity in that. Because, you know, with the QC things, if that's required, you know, that's what, we got $42 million or something from the feds from that. So I'd hate to see us endanger any of those monies or have any problems with that. Thank you.
Thank you. I only have two cards to address the Garden Grove Housing Authority. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the Housing Authority?
Actually, may I say one last name that I forgot?
You know what? Sure. Come up. Just 30 seconds though, ma'am, please. We've already given you three minutes.
I know, sorry.
Sorry about that. So I'm a victim of domestic violence. My back door, I asked them if you could please fix it. Law enforcement asked if you could please fix it. My ex broke in. I was at the hospital at UCI for his brain wrist. And he still hasn't repaired my back door. I live unsecure at the back door that does not lock or barely shut. And I've asked him in writing, the property management, and nothing. I don't think it's right for somebody with domestic abuse. History should have to be unsecure just because they're getting assistance. But thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close oral communications and move on to consent, entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
We have a motion. We have a second. Call for the vote.
Commissioner Jones.
Here. Yes.
Commissioner Klaffenstein.
Yes.
Commissioner Deidre Nguyen.
Yes.
Commissioner Tan Nguyen. Commissioner O'Neal. Vice Chair Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
And Chair Bridgum.
Yes.
And that's motion received. Seven yes votes.
Okay. Do we have any matters from Commissioners? Okay, seeing none. We will adjourn the Housing Authority meeting. The next Housing Authority will be on Tuesday, November 22nd, at 5:30 PM in the Community Meeting Center. And we'll move back to Council.
Thank you. We'll reconvene City Council, and before we go to presentations, I would like to pull Item 3A from our consent calendar forward as it pertains to one of the presentations. So can I get a motion for 3A?
A motion.
I'll second.
Call the vote.
Motion received. Six yes votes.
All right, so back to Item 1A, Presentations, Community Spotlight, Recognizing Congressman Alan Lowenthal on His Retirement from Congress and Long Career in Public Service.
Okay, and tonight, I'm going to go ahead and get started. Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council has the pleasure to present a very special Community Spotlight honoring Congressman Alan Lowenthal from the United States House of Representatives for his 30-year career in public service and his retirement. Would Congressman Alan Lowenthal please come forward? Can just stand right up here in the front by the podium, and we're gonna say some very nice things about you and your career. So Congressman Lowenthal was born on March 8th, 1941, in New York, earning his PhD from Ohio State University.
The Ohio State University.
The Ohio State University. The same university, I don't know if you even know this, but the same university attended by Garden Grove founder, Alonzo Cook.
Oh, right.
Who knew, right?
That's right.
In 1969, he moved to Long Beach to teach, and in 1992, was elected to the Long Beach City Council where he served for six years, followed by three terms in the State Assembly, then two years in the State Senate.
Two terms.
Two terms. Two terms. I have two years written here. Two terms. In 2012, Congressman Lowenthal successfully ran for the newly created 47th District, one of the most ethnically diverse districts in the nation that encompasses Garden Grove along with several other Orange County and Los Angeles County cities. An advocate of many noteworthy causes, Congressman Lowenthal rallied for millions of dollars in regional funding for key infrastructure projects that included the Chapman Avenue and Lamplighter Street Fiber Optic Traffic Signal System, and the Orange County Street Car Project.
Yes.
And he also supported passage of the 2021 American Rescue Plan Act, which allocated $48 million in critical COVID-19 relief funds to the city of Garden Grove, as well as the CARES Act that provided nearly $2 million for homeless prevention and nutrition services, along with the Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program that directed to the Garden Grove Police Department COVID-19 response efforts.
Right.
So I know that you have done many more things than what I mentioned. So I apologize that I've left out probably more than double what I mentioned. But in the respect for time, we're gonna move along, and we're gonna honor your longtime, well, actually, I'm gonna back up, because this is actually something very worth noting. In honor of longtime Garden Grove resident and Medal of Honor recipient, Teber Rubin.
Yes.
Congressman Lowenthal introduced legislation to rename the Department of Veterans Affairs Medical Center in Long Beach as the Teber Rubin VA Medical Center, which was signed into law in 2016 by President Obama.
Yes.
So that's very important to mention. Teber Rubin was a longtime resident of Garden Grove and very important to our community, and so we're very pleased with that. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Congressman Alan Lowenthal with a resolution of commendation in recognition of his 30 years of dedicated service to the 47th District and to the city and community of Garden Grove. We wish him many wonderful memories ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, mayor and council members, for this recognition. It's wonderful. It means a lot to me, and it's great to be honored the same night that you're honoring the Garden Grove Unified School District. I think that's a great team. What you missed was that I spent 20-some-odd years, 28 years, as a faculty member at Cal State Long Beach, so education is part of my core. And I'm very humbled to receive this. You know, my first term was in, I was elected in 2012, and it was a newly constructed district, the 47th Congressional District. And many people in Orange County from the old 47th were quite, you know, upset that I was their new congress member at that time. They wanted their old congress members, and it really wasn't because of me running against them. It was because of the redistricting process. And it was just after Congress had passed the Affordable Care Act. It had not yet been implemented. So I had my first community coffee and meet and greet right on Historic Main Street here in Garden Grove. We had over 100 people attending. And there were many people that were, you know, supportive of some of the policies that I was talking about, because we were talking about healthcare. Many people that were opposed to what I was talking about. But everybody left that meeting thanking me and feeling like we listened to each other. And I think that's been the hallmark of my career in all elected, from the city council to the state, is to listen. And I have my points of view, but I understand, maybe because I'm a psychologist also, that the other person is just as bright as I am. The other point of view is just as important, and it's really important to listen. It doesn't mean you have to give up who you are, but it does mean that you have to respect and listen and understand where other people are coming from. So it's been kind of my guiding principle of being in Congress. And I'm so proud to have been able to represent Garden Grove during these 10 years in Congress. One of the first things that I did was, we did our, my first office in Orange County was on Historic Main Street, was right across from the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce. I became a member right away of the Chamber of Commerce and really tried to support chamber activities, small businesses, and felt like it was really important that they had a representative also in Congress. And, you know, besides being someone who makes laws or works on laws and policy, my office and all offices in Congress spend a lot of time, the majority of our time, working on casework. We work on things for the, you know, for the IRS or the Social Security or the Veterans Administration. That's actually how I got to know Tebor, was at the Veterans Administration. And then wasn't the library here? And also I came to visit Tebor before he passed away. So I want to thank my own staff. Fong is here for the, you know, we've done in Orange County, and with a large percentage from Garden Grove, almost 2,000 residents have received constituent services out of the office. And I think we've hoped, I hope we've helped many, many of them. And also, you know, just before the pandemic, I kind of almost date everything, pre-pandemic, post-pandemic, you know, because life changed. Before the pandemic, it was very important that we had a town hall meeting here in Garden Grove where I invited the ambassador to Vietnam, Daniel Krittenbrink, to come to Garden Grove and to talk to the community and to really, if you're gonna represent, if you're gonna represent the United States in Vietnam, you gotta come to Garden Grove, and you have to come to, you know, to Little Saigon and understand just who are the people that really need your representation the most in Vietnam. And as you pointed out, during the pandemic, I worked hard on the CARES Act. I worked hard on the American Rescue Plan, which we received almost $50 million for Garden Grove in the formula. We worked on that. In the CARES Act, we received, as you pointed out, money for the police department, which was critically important. As you know, the role of the police always was the important role that city government does, but during the pandemic, they were asked to do even more. And so, you know, and I also worked on the streetcar, and I've also worked very much, which you didn't mention, on the Westminster, East Garden Grove Flood Management Project, which will help and save people a lot of money in terms of flood insurance. You know, as I conclude my term here in Congress, I'm gonna miss the Strawberry Festival. I'm gonna miss all the events in Little Saigon. I'm gonna miss, you know, we got kicked out of our office on Historic Main Street, not because we wanted to, because they were renovating the building, and we just, and we moved just a few blocks away to our office now. And I want to take this time to thank every member on the city council. George, John, Tuha, Steve, Fat Bowie, but he's not here, Stephanie, and Kim. All of you have been wonderful partners. And Garden Grove and the city have been so open. And, you know, we talk about, you know, accepting diversity. Well, this is not only a diverse city, it's an accepting diverse city. You have been very, very, and I felt like as kind of when I first came, the outsider, warmly accepted and really part of the Garden Grove community. And then also, there's Scott Stiles. You know, when I first met, well, I want to say positive, because I first met Scott in, I think when you came in August of 2015, it was, yeah. And we immediately had an attachment because we both had a really close friend from Cincinnati that we talked about and shared experiences about. And I'd also like to thank Maria and Lisa Kim for your leadership and support of my office. You both have been just kind of wonderful, not only to me, but to constituents and to my office. And I want to thank the past members, in closing, the past members of the city council, you know, Mayor Bruce Broadwater, Bow Nguyen, Mayor, Councilmember Chris Beard. I've known Chris Beard since he was a Vista volunteer 35, 40 years ago. Dina Nguyen and Chris Fan also for really helping me and working with me over the years. And as I conclude my time, I'm not leaving. I'm just gonna kind of change my role to be more of the person who has to come up and advocate for things rather than, and support you. I hope all of, you know, my friends on the council do very well as you continue your work here in Garden Grove and as you seek, you know, other avenues to express your leadership. And I look forward to working with my, being with my grandkids, but I also look forward to making sure always that the 47th and now the new district listens to its constituents and listens to its city. So thank you so much.
Alrighty, that takes us to Item 1B, which is another Community Spotlight, Recognizing the Garden Grove Unified School District for their achievements in 2022.
So with that, the Garden Grove City Council is honored to shine the Community Spotlight on the Garden Grove Unified School District for their notable achievements and accomplishments this year. So may I ask members of the Garden Grove Unified School District Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Gabriella Mafi, and the principals who are here this evening to please come forward. So if you all want to just kind of come up, and you can either face the audience or face the council, whichever you prefer.
We are the audience.
You are the audience. We have everybody? Okay, I'm just gonna get started, and I'll let the rest of you kind of assemble. So this year, Garden Grove Unified School District schools, students, and educators received many high-ranking awards and recognitions from public and private organizations. In March, California Chief Justice and State Superintendent of Public Instruction announced the 2022 Civic Learning Awards, and three Garden Grove Unified School District schools were among 26 schools recognized across the state. Garden Grove and Santiago High Schools were honored with awards of merit, and Doig Intermediate School was one of three schools statewide to receive the prestigious Award of Excellence. The Award of Excellence is the highest honor a school can receive in the Civic Learning Award Program. And Doig Intermediate School was selected for its civic action club that engaged students in community service. In April, 12 Garden Grove Unified Schools earned the 2022 California Pivotal Practice Award for innovative practices implemented during 2020 and 2021, when schools were required to offer distance learning due to COVID-19. The schools included Alameda's Intermediate, Bryant Arts Academy, Phalen Elementary, Garden Grove High School, Heritage Elementary, Irvine Intermediate, Marshall Elementary, Riverdale Tech Academy, Stanford Elementary, Stanley Elementary, Warren Elementary, and Violet Elementary. These schools were among 727 schools across California to be honored for their efforts and that centered around student engagement, distribution of technology, nutrition services, and social, emotional well-being of students. There's a lot of achievements for Garden Grove Unified School District. So I am only on page four of six. So this has been a phenomenal year, and we're so excited that all of you are here tonight. So for the fifth consecutive year, all seven of Garden Grove Unified School District's high schools earned high rankings in the Elite List of America's Best High Schools published by U.S. News &amp; World Report. U.S. News &amp; World Report analyzes data from more than 24,000 public high schools, and the rankings reflect measurements on state assessments, college readiness, college curriculum breadth, and underserved student performance. This year, Garden Grove Unified School District high schools ranked in the top 591 in California, top 254 in the Los Angeles metro area, and top 3,960 nationally from nearly 18,000 ranked schools. So this is really great. And I would like to point out that all Garden Grove Unified School District high schools ranked in the top 22% nationally. Four Garden Grove Unified School District high schools that ranked in the top 250 in California are La Quinta, Pacifica, Garden Grove, and Bolsa Grande High Schools. For the fourth consecutive year, Garden Grove Unified School District was honored with the 2022 Best Communities for Music Education Award by the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation, a national distinction presented to districts that demonstrate outstanding achievement in providing music access and education to all students. Awarded to less than 800 districts across the United States, Garden Grove Unified School District was one of only six districts in Orange County and 24 districts across California to receive this national recognition. Additionally, Hare High School was named California Model Continuation High School for 2022 by the California Department of Education. This prestigious recognition marks the second time Hare earned this award. Hare was one of six schools in Orange County and 36 across the state selected for this distinction, and there were more than 430 continuation high schools in California. So this is really awesome. These recognitions are outstanding distinctions for Garden Grove Unified School District, and the city couldn't be the city couldn't be more proud of their accomplishments. And at this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Garden Grove Unified School District's Board of Education Superintendent Dr. Gabriella Mafi and the school principals with a certificate of recognition for their hard work and high rankings. Congratulations.
Okay, if you allow me to speak. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Lan Nguyen, I'm the Vice President and a member of the Board of Trustees of the Garden Grove Unified School District. I'm truly humbled and honored to be able to speak on behalf of the Board of Education and our district staff here today. And thank you very much, President Bob Hodens, for giving me this honor today. And we are very grateful of your recognition of the performance of our students. It's not very, I don't know if you know our students, they do good work every day, but they don't, they don't get used to being recognized, they don't seem to care that much because they keep doing a good thing. But one day, they will be, they will reflect on them how special they it is today that they're being recognized by esteemed civic leaders like the City of Garden Grove before you today. And for that, I'm grateful for that honor on behalf of my students, on behalf of my staff. And also, today, I'm also thankful for your partnership with our district, with the very long-term partnership. I want to shout out to the School Resource Officers Unit that have been working with us for so long because of this partnership, that I can tell you, we, the parent, the student, and staff feel safe every day, come to school knowing that all adults had thought about our possible thing, have planned for everything so that they can enjoy their day in school. It means a lot to our parents, it means a lot to our students, and for that, we are grateful for that partnership. And speaking of a partnership, it goes beyond that, it's not only the SRO unit that we're working with, it is a partnership between the Garden Grove Unified School District and the city, having so long, I don't know you know, of campuses, is a chasing to, connected to, co-joined to the City of Garden Grove. We inside Garden Grove, Garden Grove inside us, we are co-joined, not only the neighbors. Because of that relationship, whatever happened in one does affect the other. And you can see, we, the partnership goes, works so well that we all feel appreciated, we all feel grateful that we're in Garden Grove. And for that, thank you very much for that wonderful feeling. Again, on behalf of Board of Education, on behalf of our districts, we thank you for the recognition of the good work our students do, and also want to thank you for being a good partner. And thank you very much for giving us this spotlight today. And again, good luck.
Sorry, I'm stealing the moment to make a few comments really quick. I just want to say thank you so much to the Garden Grove Unified School District, you are the district that raised me and helped get me here. I see my former principal, Dr. Sanchez, is here, and I've known Dr. Mafi for as long as I've, you know, been in Garden Grove schools, so I just want to thank them for their leadership and, you know, they are women, strong Latina women that I've looked up to, and, you know, thanks to them, I am where I am now. And some of those board members were there on my graduation day and gave me my diploma, so shout out to them for being consistent and making sure that the good work continues to be done. And so you should be very proud, I mean, all of us here, I believe all of us, are Garden Grove Unified School District graduates, so we're proud, and this is all thanks to the work that you do for our community and for our kids and families, so thank you so much.
Well, I just want to make comment as a parent, all my three boys are going to a part of Garden Grove Unified School District families, high school, middle school, and elementary. I thank you all, Dr. Murphy, the board, especially the teachers, you make a big difference on our kids' life, but thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I cheer to you all, it's a great accomplishment, and we're looking forward for many, many years of partnership. Thank you.
All righty, thank you all the GGAUSD folks for attending, we appreciate you being here and we thankful for all the great work that you do with our kids. We will move on to Item 1C regarding Garden Grove Tourism Recovery Updates.
Item 1C is Garden Grove Tourism Recovery Update presented by the Garden Grove.
Yeah, we'll pause one second, let them go ahead and clear out so they don't get stuck, so they don't get stuck filling potholes with us for the next two hours. Thank you, principals and teachers, thank you very much.
Gilbert Grisley's in Rancho de Carros.
All right, but as many of you, I also was a product of the Garden Grove Unified School District, and so great to see the accomplishments in the world today where that a lot of those things aren't going to notice in the hard work that the school district does to produce many of us to be able to open those doors for us in the future, so. Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about what's happening in the Garden Grove Tourism District and some of the excitement that we've seen as businesses come back and starting to really thrive again after we've gone through the time in COVID. I grew up in Garden Grove, as many of you did, and over the years, to be able to see how the city has grown and what it offers and what it brings to tourism, which is such a huge industry in our county, while we know we have a place with other ears up the street, unlike the ears that I have. We know that that is a great opportunity to help bring business to Garden Grove, to bring revenues to the city, to bring people to, from all over the world to visit Garden Grove and all that Orange County has to offer, and be able to get ourselves on the map in regards to that. So we appreciate all the efforts that the city is doing in regards to that. In regards to our tourism recovery update, the, we have been seeing the funds that we allocate back in starting to grow, two-point-five percent of our revenues go into the fund that helps support the Garden Grove Tourism Improvement District. Part of that is twenty percent goes back into the operation of the Garden Grove Tourism District, which funds security efforts, maintenance of landscaping, repair to things in the community and in the area so that as people come to visit us, they have a welcoming feel and see all the great things that the resort area has to offer. Sixty percent goes to Visit Anaheim, which we have that opportunity to partner with the communities that support tourism in such a huge way, and be able to leverage the reach that they have, the resources through media, the ability to put media programs together and create awareness all around the country as they go to visit different cities to bring business into our area. We have a great partnership with them and appreciate the efforts that they put forward in including all of us in that. As well, twenty percent will go to the City Future Transportation Fund, so that's a fund that will allocate into future transportation efforts and that we have on the horizon. Obviously, we all know how, what impact COVID had on our businesses as well as hotels, many of us had to shut down or ran at very low occupancies, and really had an impact on our staff, on the people that work for us, the businesses around us that were also impacted by that loss, and it's been great to see through the end of '21, the growth that we started to see back in that pent-up demand really comes back to life, as well as having a great '22. In 2022, we're seeing great demand from a tourism and leisure business, which brings people from all over the world that want to come visit, all that we have to offer in the area, and our hotels welcome them, as well as the restaurants, gas stations, businesses, all of the benefits from this tourism and the part of business that's coming back in that area, as well as from the convention side. We have seen the compression from the Anaheim area with the conventions, having much larger attendance than they anticipated, compressing down all the way to my lodge, and being able to sell out because of business flourishing with the conventions and starting to fill the entire area, and be able to offer more jobs, pay increases, offerings to the community, and be able to really be able to give back in a big way. The partnership that we have with Visit Anaheim, you know what, I'm supposed to be clicking this. The partnership that we have with Visit Anaheim has been great. During the part of COVID, we were able to partner, our hotels were able to partner with them to get PPE for our properties without any cost to us, to be able to leverage information to learn what was happening in the state, to understand the guidance that was being provided so we could learn how we could operate in that business, and really appreciate the resources that they have. Definitely my pleasure to be able to have Junior Tuva Ha with us, he is the Chief Sales Officer for Visit Anaheim, to be able to share some of the things that they are doing as business is coming back and how we start to continue to focus on bringing business back to our communities and helping all of us through that. So Junior, I'll have you join us.
I think I have documents that are on your desk now, and most of that will give you a little bit more context on what I'm going to talk about today, but thank you for having me today, Mr. Mayor and Honorable City Council. What I wanted to do is just add on to what was already said, the, you know, the goal for us is to get back to where we were in 2019, right? In 2019, as you saw from the document, fifty million visitors, fourteen-point-four billion visitor spend, billion dollars in visitor spending, one-point-two million in jobs that was created under the tourism. And during the pandemic, part of what the work that we did was to try to maintain the business that we had on the books and move some of those businesses that we had on the books into future years, 2022, 2023, and now to the future, to make sure that our recovery comes back faster than all of our competition. One of the slides, let me see, one of the slides that I have here is just a comparison of the average rate, the RevPAR that our hotels, and in your packet, we have everything from RevPAR to occupancy to ADR for our hotels, when there is a convention in town and when there is not a convention in town. So for, you know, ADR for us, it's a thirteen percent increase in ADR when there's a citywide convention in town versus when there is not, right? In terms of occupancy, there is a fourteen percent point surplus or increase when there's a citywide convention in town versus not, and then as far as RevPAR, it's about a thirty-three dollar increase when there is a convention in town. So part of the work that we do is try to get some of those major conventions into the city, and it impacts all of our, all of our hotels from Anaheim all the way to Garden Grove. Some of that, some of that is direct impact when we have shows like Natural Products or NAMM or Solar that was just here, I think a month ago, that impacts our hotel directly, and some of the smaller shows, as we talked about, that haven't gotten all of their attendance backed, the impact to our Garden Grove hotels is through compression, right? As the, as the hotels around the convention centers are selling out, some of the visitors and leisure pushes out to, into the Garden Grove. So on an annual basis, we try to get as many as fifty-five citywide conventions into the convention center, and that impacts, and that impact of conventions, of convention, I'm sorry about that, of conventions impact all of us, right, from the, from the rooms and jobs and revenue to all of our hotel partners. In addition to the group business, we are also focused on the leisure side of the business, and what you're looking at here are some of the campaigns that we've been doing prior, during the pandemic, from July of 2021 to, you know, earlier this year, and then throughout the year, in different platforms, right? So you're looking at Expedia, Priceline, and also Hot Beds are some of the OTAs or some of the online booking channels that are utilized by visitors. So our efforts are both on the group side of the business, which is conventions and meetings, and then also on the leisure side of the business, to, again, bring visitors to our destinations, bring conventions to our destination, and certainly attendance. Finally, the other piece that we really focus on is the social side, right, getting the message out to, to consumer out there. And this, this year, we did a hundred and fifty pieces, some of them are very targeted to Garden Grove businesses and hotels, as you can see, right? The objective there is to continue to put Anaheim, Garden Grove, and Orange County top of mind for travelers and visitors to come to our destination, right, and experience some of the great things that, that we have. And then we'll also speed up our recovery and getting back to those 2019 numbers that I previously talked about. And then finally, oh, sorry, finally, the last phase of sort of our recovery, if you will, is getting the international piece back, right? That is, we, about three weeks ago, I was down in Mexico looking at, that's one of our biggest feeder markets for us. In two weeks, we'll be in Canada, right, looking at, working with some of the tour operators and influencers there to be able to get the message out that Orange County, Anaheim, Garden Grove is open for business and continue to drive that. And then I think as we get into next year, we'll start getting into the Korea, Asia markets, and then also the European markets, to continue to solicit business and inform them about the great things that we have in Garden Grove. So I appreciate the, the time that you guys have given me, and I look forward to continue the partnership.
All right, should we keep going? Break, keep going, keep going? Okay, we'll take a quick break.
And at this time, we will do oral communications. I do have a handful of cards. We don't have everybody back in here quite yet. We're going to go on to oral communications, start with Tom Raiber. Don't sit down.
Hi, I'm Tom Raiber. Can please, everybody mute their mics. Thank you. Today is a hundred and fifty-three days since I sent my original email on March 26th of 2022. This is my seventh time here. I personally hand-delivered during the public forum, two times, emails. This is about nine dot eighteen dot one fifty dot zero one zero. A very simple code. Every five thousand feet of a commercial building, you need one commercial bin. The property I'm talking about has fourteen thousand eight hundred and five square feet. They need three bins. So, and they only have one bin and it's on the residential side, accessed only from the residents. So my question is, who's the puppet master that's telling everybody not to email me? I personally asked the people that I sent the emails to. Three of them just looked at me and didn't say nothing. Their names that I did send the last email to is Steve Jones, Scott Stiles, Teresa Palmeroy, Maria Stite, Lisa Kim, and David Det. Who's the puppet master? I suggest all of you, a hundred and seventy thousand residents of Garden Grove, look at it. What they're going to attempt to do under health is have the sheriffs and peace officers knock down your door and give you a prick in the arm under health. And if the cities do not apply, they don't get the funds from the state. Do we want to live in a society like that? Today, two weeks from today, November 8th, is our election. And Steve Jones, our current mayor, does not have anybody running, so one vote, he wins. So I looked at the law and the only reason why you have to register to run is only if you collect money, and I have not done so. So, under Steve's name, it will say other. Please put Thomas H. Raiber under that. Now, what am I going to do for you is exactly what I've been doing here for over six years. Coming here and talking the truth. Do we want We the People City Hall that is closed every other Friday since 1991 to continue? Or do we want it open five days a week? Do we want We the People City Hall appointments only? Do we want, when we call the police, they do not respond? I don't care. You allowed somebody else before to talk twice. George just did that another, just, just it now.
Thank you. Time's up.
Oh, so because of me being a minority, I have to leave? Thomas Raiber, I'll work for you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Happy birthday, Councilmember O'Neal. My name's Matt Bell. I'm a twenty-two-year resident in Garden Grove. I brought my family here tonight, my sons, so they could see the civic process. My, one of my sons goes to Bolsa, the other is in the Special Education Department at Pacifica. I want to start out by saying I have a huge respect for the workers and the public servants here in Garden Grove, but I wanted to address something personal that I think is affecting my family and is affecting other families in Garden Grove. It's about the policies and practices of the Planning Department. We recently started doing a bathroom and a kitchen remodel. You know, it's taken a long time to do. I actually had to send my family away for two and a half months because we didn't have a bathroom and it took that long for the inspectors to come out. I spoke to Councilmember Brightgamm and he explained there was an issue with hiring and I understand that, but for us to have one outhouse for a family of four for two and a half months waiting for inspection is terrible. And then we did our kitchen remodel, which we submitted in June and finally heard from the Planning Department that it was approved in October. So we went down, we paid the permits and we began to do the demolition. Our contractor went to get the plans and we were told that, no, they're actually not approved because the city planners discovered that there were two patios that I guess weren't permitted. They were there when we moved in over twelve years ago, which have nothing to do with our kitchen, but they will not release the plans to us because these two units are on our property. So now, I don't know if we'll be able to address these. We're living with just a microwave and an air fryer and it's a family of four and who knows how long it will take to actually get this approved. We just need our plans. We can deal with the other things after the fact, but one of the things that really bothers me is that the goalposts were moved by the Planning Department. And I think about the other residents in Garden Grove, first generation Latino families, first generation Vietnamese families. If we're having trouble navigating this process, I can't imagine what other families are going through. And in saying that, what I'm hearing from my neighbors and people that we've spoken to, this is why people don't go through this process and just do things under the table. We wanted to do the right thing. We wanted to pull the permits. We wanted to go through the city process because that's what we believe in. And we're being punished for that. And I would ask, like again, I said, the, the workers in the Planning Department, I'm sure they're dedicated to the residents of the city and they're doing everything they can, but it's the policies and the practices that really concern me at this time. And I, I know there is going to be a new council in January, but I wanted to bring it before you today because many of you will still remain here, but this is absolutely something the city has to deal with, not only for my family, but for the other residences in Garden Grove. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm having an issue with a neighbor since December. For months, I couldn't find their name and their address. I came before and they said, oh, we'll call you back and they never did. And the property lines are diagonal because of sixty-seven years ago. So are the houses, they're diagonal to each other. So with the new zoning, their house is coming in front of our house, but they would not have any dialogue and we would come and try to check their plans, to access their information, and then comes the attorney. So we, I come here with a problem, but I offer the solution too, because I thought this was like Irvine and what I read. Hey, before construction, I would look and if they have, they would have a number that we could contact, but they, there is nothing like that. So maybe the city with the new zoning and in cases of houses that are not parallel to each other, hey, contact your neighbor, give your information or at least if they, because I would come here and I would ask the city, how can the city help us? And the city said, no, there's nothing we can do. A city clerk told us, your house is too, is too long. You have to cut off your house that was sixty-seven years old. That's what a city clerk person told us. So that could be avoided. And when they first started, I said, we'll pay for it. We'll pay for it. And now the money, we would have come to the city and say, hey, let's fix this, this and that, that money I spent on attorney and on survey. And the house is under my mother-in-law's name. She's seventy-four years old. She's retired. She still needs to work as a sub-kindergarten teacher to pay for our expenses. So everybody works hard there. I have crazy hours because I'm from another country. I have stuff to solve there. My husband works at Disney. He was working five-thirty in the morning. Now it's five-thirty before two o'clock in the morning. And another thing too, please, seven, uh, seven days a week, from seven in the morning to seven at night, they were hamming there. You have no peace. So please try, it would be fine, five days a week from eight to five, so at least we can have some quiet time at our own house, you know? I'm not here to attack anybody or not to be defensive. I believe that everybody should work together, but like now I have this, this tree. The tree is stuck to their house. It's cracking our gate, our wall. Then I come to them, they say, go to the city. I come to the city, they say it is not called enforcement. What do I have to do to, do I have to sue them? And look at how close this house is. Look at how high, how high I'm going to have to go. So a seven-foot wall would not cover this window. Look at these doors. I have two front doors. I see these two front doors from my bed. How high am I going to have to put this wall? So there, there was a miscommunication because our houses face each other. Sixty-seven years ago, that would not have been. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Ruby Garcia. Come back to Ruby. Kyle Mason.
Oh. They were in the other room. Okay.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to come here and thank everybody and give an update on how our Communities Come Together event was super successful. A lot of families came out. We had a lot of parents thank us about, you know, how the environment was, how police, Garden Grove Police was really engaged with us and also engaging with all the families, all the kiddos. They were very sensitive to any sensory. Overall, it was a very beautiful night. We had parents walking out saying that they went to a safety event where they finally felt where they belonged and were understood. So we're hoping to have more of these in Garden Grove with the help and support of this community who's been amazing. So thank you to Garden Grove Neighborhood Association and Garden Grove Police Department for helping us. Stephanie Cloffenstein, who emceed our event, she hyped everybody up and was super amazing to everybody there. So we just, hopefully we can have more of these events and impact more families, but we just wanted to come here and thank everybody for allowing us to come here and talk about the event and help promote it. And hopefully we'll get more families next time on the next event. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Kyle Mason.
Good evening and thank you. Happy birthday.
Oh, thanks.
Turning 21 again?
Yeah. There's a lot of years of experience.
There you go. Well, I have some information that, you guys remember the Hometown Buffet that was open a year or so ago? In the name of God, don't anybody eat there that changed it. I worked for a company called Extreme Services part-time a year or so ago, and he's still working there, and he doesn't have the right code or licenses to clean the place. You know, they left over 160 pounds of meat in the refrigerator and the freezer for over nine months without electricity. Somebody ought to go over there and walk in the door right now, you ought to see what it smells like. I got pictures of that right now. Unreal. Thank you guys for picking up with the Police Department, bringing around and helping clear out the area. You know what the welded chain-link fence, the square fence, Mr. O'Neal? We need that around the riverbed, around the Social Security Building, and then around our area. Because that's where they're going through. Walmart got a skateboard stolen out of there. They didn't even call the police because nobody does anything unless there's $900 worth of damage. I got pictures of the guy lowering him the bike down the riverbed. Like I said, and the same thing. And I know Mr. Durfee's watching this, and I want to let him know that Clint and whoever is borrowing money from is not going to loan that man, Sean, any more money. And he keeps spoof calling everybody. So I want, I know, I'm saying this because I know he's watching it on TV. And about that truck that I wanted towed away, it's got the Arizona tags on it, I guess Mrs. Durfee, or I guess they bought it. So it's still sitting on the street with no engine. Anyway, the animal control, if they open up, again, I'd like to see the line go up Gilbert and not come around Celine. And I hope Code Enforcement will really go through that building and straighten it out. And again, the same with the mall. I hope they go through and change it out. The riverbed is loaded up again. The rain that we had just recently cleaned out a lot of stuff, but the homeless are going down in there again, a lot. So, please, and continue on with the police, we really appreciate it, man. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Malle.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. I am, I'm here to briefly discuss the Navigation Center. I think this is, besides everybody's fear of Judge Carter, right? And all his decrees and making sure these cities do this. I've looked, you know, I don't know if any of you guys have actually gone and looked at the property on West Street that we're thinking. I think it's absolutely inappropriate. It looks like in the preliminary plans look like a dog kennel. And that square footage, and I, I think, just a little history on that. In December of 2020, that piece of property was sold by Ms. Judas A. Walsh. Actually, it was listed all through 2019 for $2,190,000. And I, I think on the study session of 5/28/2019, the estimate of the acquisition cost of about $2 million was actually based on that pricing at that time. That property sold a year later, and December, it was registered December 2020. That property sold for $1,780,000. And we're offering $5.6 million for this. I know in the September 27 City Council meeting, there was a mention of it being rehabilitated. I pulled the permits. The value of the work done on that by the owner, the valuation, not the fees and all that, the value that they paid was $90,000, which they replaced it with that big roof. And there was some minor mechanical in this. And that, that puts that at $492.26 a square foot. You know, I, I have a friend who's a lawyer in Santa Ana, and he, he got out a residential in the early 2000s, took all that money and bought commercial. I mentioned that number to him, and he was laughing so hard. Like, this is like when you're a kid, like when your siblings has milk come out of your nose, you're, he wasn't just belly laughing, he was just laughing like crazy. So, you know, I looked at this, 13832 West Street, that is, two doors down, that just came up, is listed 361 a square foot. Our building, Seaboard, we tried to sell it $390 a square foot, and that didn't go through. So what I'm asking is that we do not do the expedited escrow and closing. It's absurd. It's nonsense. We should look, my idea is we should look at the Seaboard Avenue, that we can make a decent, have anybody, any of you guys gone and looked at the bridge? What they did in Costa Mesa? That is a beautiful building, that is, they, it's, the money that we are allocating to this, if, I think we should stop the process. I, I don't know, do you need to call a special meeting and get rid of the, so you can get rid of that? Well, listen, this is, this, this is like misappropriation of funds. How can, how can you, how can we say this building is worth $492 a square foot? This Vanguard, where is that? I, I looked, I was actually gonna contact Ms. Palmeroy. Where is the Vanguard, the comps? That's not, that wasn't on the September 26 meeting.
Thank you.
That's it? You know, it's.
That's all the.
By buying the Seaboard property and making something decent, we have plenty of, we have plenty of money in the, we have plenty of money in the community improvement.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have, is there anyone else wishing to, okay, sir, please stop. Is there anyone else wishing to speak that did not turn in a pink card? Okay, seeing none, we will close oral communications, and we will now recess to successor agency. Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
Member Brightegum?
Yes.
Member O'Neal?
Here.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Here.
Member Cloughenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
And Chair Jones.
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie is absent.
All right, we already did our communications, go on to consent items, just receive and file the minutes. Can I get a motion? I'll move it.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Thank you. Any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn to the Sanitary District, and I'll hand it over to President O'Neal. All right, thank you. If we could call roll for the Garden Grove Sanitary District meeting?
Member Brightegum?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Cloughenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice President Deidre Nguyen?
Here.
And President O'Neal.
Here.
Thank you. We've already held oral communications simultaneously with council. We do have two items on the consent, and I'll entertain a motion for consent.
Motion.
A motion, take that as a second, call for the vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Thank you. Any matters from board members? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn until the next regular scheduled meeting for November 22nd. Thank you. We will reconvene City Council, takes us on to consent calendar. It's recommended that 3A through 3I be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would request to pull an item.
I'll move the balance. Second.
Roll, call the vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
All right, that takes us on to commission and committee matters, item 4A.
Item 4A is to receive and file Measure O Citizens Oversight Committee annual report for fiscal year 2021, '22, and City Manager Stiles is here to make some comments.
Just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, so we, the Measure O Citizens Oversight Committee had a meeting earlier this week, and you all know Sandy Thomas, who is the chair of our Oversight Committee, and they have a statutory obligation to kind of pay attention to the Measure O revenue that's coming in. And so Ms. Thomas is here to give us an update on the work of her Oversight Committee.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. Okay, the Measure O Citizens Oversight Committee was established on February 26, 2019, and it's the committee's responsibility to review the city's annual mid-year and year-end budgets to ensure that the funds are collected from the 1% sales tax increase, which began April 1st, 2019. The objective for our committee is, does the current audited financial information reflect the Measure O public safety and vital city services tax, and was it collected and appropriately spent? Does the city propose, does the city's proposed general fund annual budget and the CIP plan protect and maintain the city's core services, including public safety? We had two committee meetings for the fiscal year 2021, '22. Our first meeting was held October 4th, 2021. Finance Director Patricia Song, she reviewed the draft Measure O annual report that was to be presented to the City Council on October 26, 2021. And this report communicated to City Council the Measure O Citizens Oversight Committee's activities during the past year, as well as findings on the city's financial statement and budget documents, as required by Resolution Number 9540-19. The committee also reviewed the fiscal year 2020, 2021 unaudited general fund financial data, reviewed the adopted fiscal year 2021, '23 biannual budget for the general fund, and discussed the importance of continued continuation with the clear communication between staff and the committee, and how it had ensured transparency and accountability of the use of the Measure O funds. The committee also reinforced the confidence that the committee has in the staff. Our next meeting was on March 28th. Oh, I may have skipped something. No, I didn't. Okay, on March 28th meeting, the committee reviewed Chapter 2.02 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code, the Code of Ethics for Public Officers and Employees, which is our annual review for us. We also reviewed the fiscal year 2020, 2021 audited financial information, reviewed the fiscal year 2021, 2022 mid-year general fund revenue and expenditures, and discussed the accounting and reporting of Measure O funds received and used. The audited financial information for fiscal year 2020 and 2021, the staff presented to the committee the fiscal year 2020, 2021 audited revenue and expenditures for the city's general fund. The general fund was presented at the city's annual comprehensive financial report, or the financial report, and it does include the city's main operating fund, also known as the general fund, economic development fund, tourism improvement district funds, land sale proceed funds, and deposit funds. And in Table 1 in your report summarizes the city's overall general fund revenues. In fiscal year 2020, 2021, the city received approximately $23.3 million from the 1 cent sales tax form for Measure O, which is an increase of 3.3 million from the prior fiscal year. Total general fund expenditures for the same fiscal year was $128.9 million, of which 73% of those funds were used for police and fire, which meets or exceeds the Measure O goals. Comparing to the previous fiscal year, public safety expenditures increased by 2.7 million, among which 2.2 million was in police expenditures, police safety. And in summary, we're charged with, does the current audited financial information reflect that the Measure O's public safety and vital city service tax, was it collected and appropriately spent? Yes. The committee's conclusion was that the committee reviewed the financials, which were determined to be reported properly and were approved by unanimous vote. The committee also reviewed the 2021 mid-year general fund budget, and that financial position was based on recorded financial data as of February 2022, the revenue as presented. As of February 2022, revenue came in stronger than anticipated due to increased consumer spending. As of February 22, actual reported expenditures by category were shared with the Measure O Committee, which showed public safety spending occupied 73.2% of the total general fund expenditures. This is broken down as police expenditures of $42.3 million, or 47%, and to fire expenditures of $24 million, or 26%. And this is shown in your graph three in your report. The committee findings and recommendations. The Measure O Citizens Oversight Committee has reviewed the audited financial statements, the financial data for fiscal year 2020, '21, and budget information for fiscal years 2021, '22 at mid-year, and the committee concludes the following. The audited financial information presented to the committee for fiscal, fiscal year 2020, 2021 properly reflects the Measure O public safety and vital city services tax was collected and appropriately spent. The city's general fund fiscal year 2021, '22 budget and five-year capital improvement plan, as well as the mid-year performance indicators, protect and maintain the city's core services, including public safety. The committee's conclusion was that the committee reviewed the financials, which were determined to be reported properly and were approved by unanimous vote. Those were our two meetings that we had. Just a couple of recommendations the committee had for staff was to review future audited financial information, which includes Measure O tax revenue and expenditures, review general fund revenue sources and budget allocations, and update the committee periodically on general fund revenue and expenditures to ensure a clear system of accountability. And just one other note that I wanted to mention, on behalf of the Measure O Citizens Oversight Committee, we would like to thank the city staff for all their hard work that they do for us, and the, and the expectations of this committee, and we are most appreciative. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Sandy, for serving on that Oversight Committee. We feel in good hands with you and the rest of the crew there looking on. And thank you for the report. Colleagues, any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a receive and file item, but it's listed as an action item, do we need to? Receive and file, yeah. Okay, we got a motion in a second, call the vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Alrighty, thank you, Patricia, thank you, Sandy. Items for consideration, item 5A.
Item 5A is approval of Amendment Number 4 to the agreement with CTNT Concrete Paving Inc. for on-call concrete repair and replacement, and Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, City Council is being asked to approve Amendment Number 4 to the existing agreement with CTNT Concrete Paving Incorporated to furnish all labor, materials, and equipment for on-call concrete construction work, and that's basically as part of our, the city's maintenance efforts. In general, the concrete work will include maintenance repairs to sidewalks, curb and gutters, cross gutters, wheelchair ramps, and driveway approaches in various locations throughout the city. The amendment will increase the current contract amount from $660,000 a year to $900,000 per year, and will increase future contractual option amounts from $600,000 a year to $900,000 a year. In general, these increases will allow us to perform additional needed work in residential streets and cover cost increases due to inflation. Should the council decide to amend the contract tonight, the city can continue to use the services of the contractor throughout the remainder of the fiscal year. This amendment will be paid for with gas taxes. This concludes staff's report, and we're available should you have any questions.
Thanks, Phil. Colleagues, any questions, comments?
Move to approve?
Call the vote. Item 5B.
There we go. There we go.
It's like, how many times I gotta hit this?
It's like, how many times am I gonna hit this thing?
Motion received. Six yes votes.
All right, thank you. Item 5B.
Item 5B is the annual report for the BWL OC Mobile Response Team Pilot Program, and approval of a First Amendment with BWL OC Mind OC. And Ms. Kim is here to give the report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Just by way of background, in May of 2021, the City Council approved a BWL Mobile Response Team Pilot Program. The goal of the pilot program was to partner with mental health experts, such as the BWL OC team, who are trained to respond to and to deescalate situations such as mental health crises, substance use individuals, and individuals at risk of homelessness. The 18-month pilot program was incorporated to ramp up a 16-month training period with the Garden Grove Police Department Special Resources Team in coordination with my department and the Orange County Fire Authority. Tonight, we have Marshall Moncrief, our CEO of Mind OC, to present the annual report of the progress of program implementation over the past 12 months. Following Mr. Moncrief's presentation of the annual report, we have Deputy Chief Alfarah that will highlight the collaboration with our Special Resources Team, and then I will close the staff report. Mr. Moncrief will present?
Thank you, Michael, for being here and for bearing with us as we got through the rest of our agenda.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I hope that you'll receive this as a positive update. And first, a really sincere thank you. I want to thank each one of you on the council, Mayor Jones, as well as your city manager, Mr. Stiles, and Lisa Kim, the chief, and the entire department. And I really mean that wholeheartedly. This is not easy work, and it's not easy for a city to step in with the type of leadership that Garden Grove stepped in with. And I want you to know that what you've started here is spreading across other cities, across Orange County. And it's a very meaningful point of progress. We're 34 cities in this county, and so when you do something in one city, it's kind of like pushing on the balloon. And so, and it impacts other cities. And that's happening in a positive way because of your leadership. And so I wanted to take that opportunity, standing before you tonight, and just, and thank you. We have a few slides. I think, there they are. And I'll move through them quickly. Particularly, the first couple of slides, I'll move through quickly. And I offer them, some of you are familiar with the context already, but for those in the community that might be watching, I think just a minute of context could be helpful. And BWL Orange County is a collaboration of community. And the goal of BWL is to create a world-class system of mental health care for Orange County, in the same way we have world-class health care for every other medical challenge. And it's going to take a whole community to do that. Today, the challenge that we face is there's lots of activities in mental health and substance use treatment, but they're fragmented, as you see on the picture on the left. And so, a lot of people are doing a lot of good things, but it's happening in these isolated acupuncture-like pokes, instead of a collective impact. The result of fragmented efforts and a non-system is that the crises are increasing in the community. Our default response are the good people of law enforcement and EMS, who are never designed to respond to these challenges. And then the default destination then becomes hospitals and jails, which isn't good for either the patient in need or the systems that are being strained. And so what we're trying to do in BWL is to make the left side look more like the right side. It's to bring the whole community together to create a united system of care, a unified system of care, that wraps support around the entire community, regardless of the insurance status of the person, or the clinical condition of the person, whether it's mild, moderate, or severe. And cities are playing a critical role in that, and that's largely due to Garden Grove's leadership, as well as others. And so that's the context for my thank you, is Garden Grove is a major element in the right side of that picture. So moving into the update with the Mobile Response Program, this is a non-emergency crisis response program, so for non-criminal, non-violent situations that involve mental health, substance use, or social service-related needs. This program is in place to respond to that. This is done in massive collaboration with law enforcement and fire and EMS, and operates in deference to law enforcement and your city leadership. So they guide us on how this gets deployed. Really simply, for those that aren't familiar with it, when a call from community comes in, it gets routed through dispatch. And today, your dispatch team is trained to deploy three tools, a fire truck, an ambulance, or a police car, in response to the challenge. And this program simply gives a fourth really critical tool for those challenges we just talked about, mental health, substance use, or social services-related issues. It optimizes the availability of your first responders to really attend to the challenges they're uniquely positioned to attend to. These are some photos in Garden Grove. We've got several others, and in fact, it'd be fun one day just to sit down and show you the book of photos, but for time, we're just showing a few here. But there are so many proud moments of this program active in your community. We're, as you see in the upper left and the lower left, we're in communities with well-resourced, housed, working, contributing members of your community, supporting them in moments of crisis. We're also working with, in the upper right, you see somebody who was struggling with homelessness in the van, and supporting them as well. And down in the lower right, we liked that picture because we're also beginning to interact with your schools. We're in places of faith, and we're in places of business. And so wherever the challenge is, you've created a service that's responsive to the need of the challenge. And kind of like the invocation at the beginning of this meeting, I loved it so much, it was mentioned, you know, Garden Grove is positioning to embrace the needs of the community, and this program really highlights that. To get into the data, and I'll move quickly through this, and then be available to your questions. You can be very proud of the escalation of this program, and so we're serving quite a few people per month. Total served is in the thousands already. In terms of response, a majority of these responses do not require co-response with law enforcement, and so it really is freeing up law enforcement to be available for other things. As this program continues, we get better, we build trust with law enforcement, and we want to see that number continue to increase. About 80% of these calls, we were dispatched to community. That's another good statistic. What that means to us is, the community member called in for support, not knowing what support they needed, they just needed support. And dispatch appropriately trained new to triage this program and send them out. And so it's working. The other statistic, and probably my favorite, is you hear the term "health equity," and it often kind of sits in academia, but where do you see it manifest? This is health equity manifest. 85% of the people that we're coming into contact with are stabilized in the community. And so we're able to be responsive to their cultural needs, sensitive to what the community resources are, and plug them in. This is not about scooping up people in the van and taking them to the BWL clinic. That capability is there when we need it, but it isn't the goal. And so that 85% are stabilized in the community just is really important for the human being that's struggling. And one of the last statistics, this is for everybody, and so 60-some percent are unhoused, and so we are addressing the homeless challenge in the community, but a good number are housed. And so, mental health challenges are the great equalizer, and so it impacts everybody, regardless of socioeconomic, or housed, or unhoused. And again, the program you've created is addressing both, and so thank you for that. I think this is the last statistic, and it's a little noisy, but cutting down into the sort of the bottom right number, August and September, you see the number of hours that were in service responding to calls, and so it's in the hundreds. And those are all hours that get regained by law enforcement to do what they do best, and free up from having to do the vital social work in the community. And we thank you.
Before I open up to my colleagues, I just want to say, I think I speak on behalf of my colleagues, thank you so much for this very unique, timely, and relevant service that you guys provide. It's been a game changer for us in the city. I'm not at all surprised that so many other cities are starting to follow suit now in that regard. But just on a daily basis, I see the big blue vans driving around. I see the folks patiently interacting with people on the sidewalks and in centers and whatnot. You're very present. You guys are very engaged, and done a few ride-alongs. I'm looking forward to doing more, and I'm just so impressed and so pleased with the work that you're doing here in our city. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Jones.
Colleagues, questions coming?
I just want to say thank you so much. I know when I toured your facility, and I asked all those burning questions as healthcare professional, and hearing about what you had done in other states, and I whispered, you know, I'd love to see something like that in Orange County. Little did I know, we'd be one of the first cities to actually implement it. So it's exciting to see, and to really get the feedback and response from our community to know that, you know, we are really doing our diligence to ensure that we have licensed and trained professionals to address their very specific needs. I know when we were, before we voted for this, we talked about implementation, and we talked a lot about cultural sensitivity and language, and you guys ensured us that you would be taking care of all of those different factors, and you've done so in a manner that provides dignity to those residents that do require extra need and attention. So just thank you so much for your care of our community. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
More thank yous, mostly, but it is true. The mayor pointed out that you're very visible in the community. We see you everywhere, and I think that's so important to the residents to know that you're real, and you're out there, and you're working, and you're hands-on, and I think that just means a lot. And your work is so important, and we really appreciate having you in the city. And I'm very thankful that we have you, and just for the work that you're doing. And I know the community feels the same way, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'll just add that one of the key points that you made is, you know, we're not trying to relocate these folks somewhere else, you know, put them in the van and take them away. A lot of people in the public think that, but most of these people are already living in our city, or have some sort of way of living here. So if we don't get them the help, they're still going to be here, but we need to get them the help, and get them, treat them where they're at, and not just ship them off somewhere else. So that's a key point in this whole thing.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Rehabilitate folks.
Yes, thank you.
I was very fortunate to be able to see your folks firsthand in action on my street.
Oh.
And a young gentleman, young father, had a mental lapse, and ended up coming down our street by mistake. And anyway, they were very professional, and they dealt with him, and were able to get him back home and resituated and everything. So anyway, kudos to your staff.
Thank you. Thank you.
This is an action item for a First Amendment with their agreement? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion.
Oh, we got more stuff?
No.
All right.
Still got the chief.
I know, unforgettable. But good evening, Mayor Jones and councilmembers. Now, I'll just reiterate what everyone has saying. For the police department, I've said from the get-go, the BWL program is a force multiplier for us. It's, you know, you looked at the data, 31 minutes on average for each call that they're on. Well, that frees up our officers for 31 minutes, allows them to handle those high-priority calls, and, you know, puts them out there on the streets. And as far as a partnership with Marshall and his staff, it's been nothing but outstanding. A very cohesive partnership. We work well. His team has blended in well with our police department. Obviously, I know our SRT team works with them daily, and I've also taken the time to meet with our patrol officers and sergeants, and they say nothing but great things. So we look forward to the continued partnership with BWL. And I'm glad our city is taking this lead, and we really are becoming the model of how you should handle this and have a significant impact to improve the quality of life for everyone in our community. So thank you, Marshall.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, make a motion.
One second.
All right. We have a motion in a second, and we will call the vote.
Motion received. Six yes votes.
All righty. Matters from council. Go around the horn. Kim?
I'll just be really quick. Aside from saying happy early birthday to Councilmember John O'Neil, I just want to thank our staff so much, our police department, Public Works, Marshall and his team at BWL OC. You know, I've been sitting in a lot of different meetings regarding mental health and homelessness, and I, every meeting that I get off of, I'm just more and more proud of our leadership and the work that we're doing, and the continuum of care that we, you know, we have our strategic plan that Lisa's team has created for us, and that we're really trying to follow it, and add to it by having the navigation center in Garden Grove, and the support of my colleagues to push for items like this, because we're hearing it from our residents. But, you know, other cities tout their homeless shelter bed count, and I'm like, that's one tick off the list of things that you need to be doing. And to see that we're really trying to get every single angle possible to address homelessness, and to do it in a way that's compassionate, and that's providing dignity to residents and folks that really need these services, I'm just really proud to sit on this council and serve this city, and to work with all of you, and for our amazing staff and the work that they do. So just wanted to share, you know, I've been on several meetings now, and Garden Grove is really leading the way in taking number-one spot on how we're handling this situation. So you guys should be really proud.
Jeff?
Sure. I know others are gonna make mention of the park ribbon-cutting today, or the playground equipment, I should say. But that was really fun to be there and see the new playground equipment at Garden Grove Park. It's very special to see our parks getting some additional love, and we've been very fortunate to have some grant opportunities to make that happen. So I just make sure that you take your kids this weekend and go over to Garden Grove Park and check out the new playground equipment. It's very special. Quickly, I just wanted to make mention that Vector Control gives out awards based on their kind of summer marketing campaign to talk about outreach and education for mosquitoes and vector control, or West Nile virus awareness. And Garden Grove, again, won Best Support of City for all of their outreach efforts, whether it's digital billboards, or signage at the bus stops, or our magnets that we have on the back of our public work trucks. Garden Grove really just takes it to a next level. And so Vector Control brought over, actually, there's a plaque and a certificate that are going to go to Anna Polito and her entire team here at City Hall. So, yeah, congratulations to them for just helping out so much and getting this very important information out. Outreach and education truly is such a key component to the overall health and safety of our residents in regards to West Nile virus. And we're very fortunate that we didn't have any residents suffer from West Nile virus this mosquito season. Although mosquito season used to be just the summer, now it's year-round. We have different invasive mosquito breeds that just are biting us year-round now, which is unfortunate. But then they also want to make mention of, and make sure people understand that, we have a growing number of typhus cases in Garden Grove. In fact, unfortunately, we're leading the way on typhus cases in the county. And that means that whether it's an opossum, or a raccoon, or maybe a squirrel has infected fleas, those fleas get on our pets, and then they bite us. And that's how we can acquire typhus. So it's very dangerous, and we need to make sure that our pets are on flea and tick medication to try and tamp down these numbers, as they're still kind of climbing. So that's just a quick vector update. Thank you.
Thank you. George?
Yeah, first and foremost, happy birthday, Councilmember O'Neil.
Happy birthday.
You know, Halloween is coming up, and I just want to remind parents to be safe with their children, you know. Reflective vests at night are always a good idea. Those lights, those little chem lights that they break. Watching some of the news reports on the news, and they're talking about these large fentanyl seizures coming in shaped like homemade candies. Please, please check your children's candy. If it looks homemade, don't let them have it. Look for the wrapped candy bars. Don't, you know, it might look tasty, and it might be fine, but it's not worth the risk. It's just not worth the risk. So if you see, you know, occasionally, somebody on the street wants to make candied apples or some other thing, just respectfully, no, thank you, you know. And, you know, make sure that your kids don't eat those type of treats. And with that being said, happy Halloween.
John? Birthday boy.
Just a couple of things.
Birthday boy, a little early. It's in November, so a little bit early. But thank you very much. You gotta enjoy every one of them, even though I'm not really a birthday person. But anyway, just a couple of quick things. The fentanyl thing, it's hit close to home. People that we know have lost a 17-year-old daughter, and I know of a 19-year-old. It just breaks my heart to think of a young person like that, makes a mistake, takes something that seems innocent given to them at a party by something. Do not do it. Educate your folks. Do not take anything that you don't know what it is in this day and age with what's going on. It's, those lives are just wiped out, and it just destroys the whole family. So, yeah, it's tough. On the presentations tonight, I just wanted to comment real quick. Congratulations on the long career, successful career of Congressman Alan Loenthal. He's done so much for the community, and he's a quiet leader. So he's not out there boasting about himself. He's communicating with the city leaders and getting things done for his constituents. So I really appreciate what he's done there. And not only everything he's done in the community, but when my mother passed away last year...
last year, I mean, I've known Alan since I was elected, he was elected, we meet at functions. He's the first one that called me on my cellphone and, you know, condolences for my mother passing. So, I'll never forget that, when the congressman calls councilman, you know, I mean, come on. And the Scott Stiles. So, congratulations on his retirement. The Garden Grove Unified School District, my sister used to work for the district, she moved away recently, so she's not with them anymore. But, you know, kudos to, you know, like you said, most of us up here either attended a school or have kids in the school district. At least four of us here graduated from Garden Grove High Schools, right? And I went to Gilbert Rancho. The teachers and the principals are the core staff, I mean, obviously, the board and the staff and the administration in a whole, but really, the people in the front lines are the teachers and the principals, and they do such a great job in Garden Grove, I know from experience. The tourism district briefing that we had was great. I see it coming around, being a trades guy and construction workers of all types. They, they work at these conventions. They bring, those conventions bring in a huge amount of work for people that have jobs: electricians, plumbers, set dressers, I mean, you name it, goes down to hotels, restaurants, and all that. But people don't think about the people that have to set up those shows in a short period of time. A lot of time, they're making overtime, they're there working away from their family, but they're, they're working those shows and getting those shows set up, taken down, and get ready for the next one. I know that we have about, at least on the type of show like the last one, the solar, probably sixty electricians working at least a couple of weeks straight to set up and take down. So, multiply that by all the other trades that are involved. And let's see, lastly, oh, we were talking about parks, you know, Magnolia Park's next, District Two. So, if you're from District Two, you're going to see, you know, you've seen a lot of construction over there because of the water improvements related to the park, but now you're going to see things for the residents to use coming up. It'll take a while, but it's going to really spruce up the Magnolia Park. And I was driving, going through there the other day, and it was the middle of the week and kind of the middle of the day, there wasn't too many people there, but there was an elderly gentleman using the equipment, and he was all excited about hearing me talk about how we're going to improve the park because he uses it every day. So, that's great news that we're able to get the money to spruce up our parks and make Garden Grove new city parks all the way around. So, it's going to be great. And sorry about being long-winded, but that's all I got.
Thank you. Tuha?
Okay, I'm going to make it shorter. Well, first of all, thank you to the staff. We have a lot of things to highlight today, but most important is congratulations to Congressman Alan Lowenthal for your retirement. We're going to miss you. He's a great mentor, but we still continue to see him year-round with all the city events, hopefully. Congratulations to Garden Grove Unified School District, that's a great accomplishment. And also, thank you to the staff, city staff, especially the Community Services, John Montanes, Janet, and all the team for the park, a lot of work behind it. But we had the upgrade park, well, Garden Grove Park looked very nice now. I think the last, I can't remember when was the last time we have an upgrade for that park. It's a long overdue. Very excited, it's happening in District Three, so that's, welcome everybody to the park this weekend or any day, come by, it's great amenities there. And happy birthday, early birthday to the birthday boy.
Likewise, happy birthday, my friend. And although several of my colleagues have already mentioned this, I just have to pile on, that the new playground equipment at Garden Grove Park is absolutely amazing. I mean, it's a, it's a very robust setup, looks great. Can't wait to see what they do with Magnolia Park and other parks. It's just great to see the grant funding coming in and being able to do this caliber of improvements. It's not a minor undertaking, and we appreciate, as Tuha said, John, Janet, Phil Carter, so many others in Community Services, Public Works, and all across. So, thanks for that. City Manager Scott Stiles, anything?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, just a few things. One is, I wanted to update, sometime talked to Councilman Brightingham a little bit about our building inspection process. We're making some headway on hiring some new people, some contractors, some other stuff. We've talked a little bit about bringing an update report to the council, so we'll be doing that in the coming weeks. So, we're trying to stay focused. Cities are big entities, we got a lot of good stuff going on, we got stuff we can always keep working on. So, more to come on that, we'll be briefing you. To Councilmember Kim Nguyen's comment about our continuum of care, one of the things we're also looking at, I know Councilmember Nguyen has been having some discussions about Tu, and I think I briefed you a little bit about the idea of some street medicine programs that we think we can work on in a partnership with CalOptima. So, more information to be coming on that, we're going to be talking about that more. Kind of is that full range of programs that the council member talked about, everything from our Special Resources Team to our permanent supportive housing, you know, our Housing Authority and all the vouchers that they provide. We've got the Mobile Mental Health Program, where we're actually working with Marshall and CalOptima on some street medicine concepts. So, more to come. The Navigation Center, we got a lot of stuff going on, and we are trying to approach it on that continuum of care, so we're not just looking at one thing and then we're done and don't worry about anything else. So, that's kind of been our focus. All of you have asked us to be laser-focused on this, and we are trying to be laser-focused on it. I also have to chime in and thank John Montanes and all of his staff. We had a great ribbon-cutting, it was great to see a ribbon being cut, and then kids run through the ribbon to get to the playpark, and, you know, that's kind of why we do what we're doing here, and, you know, that's, that's good stuff to see. The last thing I wanted to mention is that November, next month, November's going to be a very busy time for all of us. We normally would have two meetings scheduled for next month, both on November eighth, which happens to be Election Day, and we know how busy a lot of elected officials are and everybody are that particular day. And then our second meeting is on November twenty-second, which is a couple days before Thanksgiving. A lot of people are traveling, doing other stuff. So, there's been some conversation and thought that it might make some sense to cancel both of those meetings, but to have one meeting in between the two of them so that we have one meeting in November, and that would be a special meeting on November fifteenth. We think we can, there won't be any items that we can't take care of that will be that urgent, that we can't do that. And so, with council's indulgence, and if you think that's a good idea, we'll cancel both of those meetings, and we'll plan for a meeting on November fifteenth. Obviously, the other, there's other agencies that would also meet on November twenty-second, Housing Authority, Sanitation District, others, and we'd obviously be canceling those too in conjunction with the council meeting. So, I don't think it's anything that we need to vote on, but if general affirmation of the council, that makes sense, that's what the staff will plan for.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. General Counsel, anything to report out or any need for a closed session?
Nothing, nothing for me today. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. With that, we will stand adjourned for this evening. Enjoy the rest of your night, everyone. Thank you.